Across vine from there, in the Mary.
All right.
All right. Welcome everyone to our August 3rd four supervisor meeting. This time we've called me in order of Mr. Schley, would you give us indication?
Absolutely. Father, our hearts are joined together, we united more than in one mind to come together to conduct this camp in a way that please you, Father. Well, we need you in a very real, present way today through the power of your Holy Spirit, Lord, I pray these men would be equipped to make decisions that are in keeping with the best interest of all of our citizens. Father, we're confronted on a day to day basis with challenges. Pray, Father, that you would give us the wisdom that we need to navigate those challenges. Pray, Father, you'll give the staff, our employees, Lord, the courage, the energy that they need to carry out their duties. Father, let them know, y'all should have it out, how important they are and how appreciated they are by all of the citizens of this county, for all goodness in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, first up on our agenda is public comment. We have Mr. Carl Frank with us. Come on up, Mr. Carl.
Good morning.
Morning.
Trying to give y'all the status of where we're at on certain things on the courthouse. As you may be aware, we issued a substantial certificate of substantial completion on July 17th, which basically means that the courthouse was available for use. And on that date, let me tell you what happens when we issue that. And I, it's gonna need your signature, Jay.
Right.
What happens when you issue a substantial certificate? That means that the city's signed off on it, you've got a certificate of occupancy. But with that goes a list of deficiency items, which are generally, for the most part, minor items, but items that need to be corrected before the building is finally accepted. This is the list that went to the contractor for his correction, and this does not include the exterior. So they, they're working on that. However, our intention is to get a schedule from them of when they're going to complete that, certain items, due dates, things of that nature. Because the list is fairly extensive, including things such as painting and even putting in glass and other things, we don't think they're gonna be through till the end of August. And we have a little concern about that, but we're gonna push them on that. Going along with that, there's also a value that we place on that that is withheld, and in this particular case, it's $386,482. And that doesn't mean that that's, that's what's allowed by the contract. And as they correct things or whittle down the list, we may make a recommendation to reduce that. But that's on top of what, what is left right now, and there's $1.8 million still left in the construction contract, which includes 900 and something thousands for retainage. Now, we've asked or instructed the users of the buildings to make lists of things that as they use the building, they'll find out there aren't, need to be tweaked or need to be adjusted or some, something that may not be working. So those are defined as warranty items. The warranty begins, the one-year warranty begins on July 17th, which covers everything. But there's also other warranties, such as roofing, mechanical systems, other things that have longer warranties, it may go five years, may go 25 years. So, but that all begins on that official date. At the end of one year, July 17th, 2021, we will make a, another review, and we'll have representatives of the county and the contractor, we'll walk through the building. And at that time, anything that's still, or that has not worked or is not working at that time will be corrected by the contractor and signed off. So that, we'll, we'll do a checklist of that at that time. And that'll happen on and before July 17th, 2021. You'll still be getting probably, and I think there's one on the agenda today, contractor pay applications, 'cause he's actually a month behind. I think the one we just turned in is for June, so it doesn't even include the work for July. But as he goes forward in the next month or two, we'll review that also. There will be a final pay application, we don't intend, we don't anticipate that to be sent in by the contract until August. At that time, what we'll do is we'll reconcile all the allowances, there's still money left in the contract that we anticipate will not be used. For instance, the contingency allowance is still 80-something thousand dollars in there. There's some other allowances, and then there's some monies on the dirt work for the change orders that at last reckoning were still not used. So there'll be some allowances done then. There'll be some assessment, or we'll make a calculation of, of days behind the approved, board-approved time that you've given them for extensions. That'll be a decision for the board. There are, in the contract, potential liquidated damages that the board could assess, and we'll review with the board and maybe at that time the legal counsel on what the board desires to do with that. But all that's been set into place, and so that's where we're at on the courthouse right now. What we're trying to do is make sure that they don't, they go ahead and get these minor, these items corrected and finished, doesn't need to drag on. Unfortunately, in projects, it has a, that happens more often than not, these things drag on. But that's where we're at today on the courthouse. There's some things that we've told them, we think they need to get prioritized and correcting, so we encourage them to do that. But there's things like painting, touch-up painting that they can do and things of that nature that aren't as critical at this point. You don't have any questions on where we're at on that?
I don't have a question where we're at. I have a question in the future. Is there a way that you, or if you are the architect, when we have a contract like this, can give us information, history on the people who bid on it, and let's look back and see what overruns or things like this has occurred with, I mean, even though they may be the lowest bid, as we can see in this case, that may not have been the best choice?
Uh, we can do that, we always do, we even did it on this job, Steve, we just, they have, we always check the contractors. We pretty much know who bid in certain sized jobs. And you do, and I'm, I would defer to that.
I didn't, I don't remember hearing that this particular contractor had a history of running over.
Well, they don't, they were aware of it.
He had good reviews.
Yeah. And, and for the most part, the quality of work has been good. I think what we see unfortunately, Steve, and we've seen it the last few years, getting projects completed, the contractors getting project completed, just, when they get down to this point, it's just hard to get them, they focus on other things.
How did the schools stay within their time, pretty much?
Uh, well, they've got liquidate damages, but we got, we're working on a lot of Rankin County schools, and we've got some concerns there about some of them getting through.
But nothing like a year and a half over.
No, but this, I, no, and, and this is a little bit unusual. The site started off getting them behind, and then we had, I can tell you, we've had over 400 days of rain since they started three years ago. Now, not all of that's been significant rain, but based on the National Weather Service.
Say that one more time, 400 rain over three years ago?
422 days.
All right, three, that's my point, three years ago.
And that's a lot of rain on this site.
That's a lot of days, a lot of time.
It is a lot of time. In this site, I, I think everybody may have underestimated the difficulty of this site, including us. It's, because what we do, we have pre-bid conferences, and I asked them about the amount, I asked every contractor that was present, is there enough time in this project? And they all said, yeah. And, but you can see at the very beginning, he gave the county a credit to get 90 more days, so he was already concerned at the very beginning, even before we started. I think he was a $45,000 credit to get 90 more days. But yes, but I'll tell you, when we've been through this with the state, I had, you know, the state, it's a legal, it's a gray area about disqualifying a low bidder on a publicly funded project.
Yeah.
And again, I would defer to the legal counsel on that, 'cause I don't want to get there. But to answer your question, yes. Any other questions on the courthouse?
I have one, you said that doesn't address the outside, and at what point are you gonna get?
We're gonna do that this week. They weren't, they just weren't finished enough for us to do a punch list without having another 30 or 40 pages.
So is there any intention of doing any other sodding?
Uh, I hadn't, I was there Friday. They've got pretty much of it sodded, except for that part up on the west, which is really not county property where they were having regrade. What, is there a specific area?
If you're looking at the front of it and we're looking at bare dirt, that's not a good look.
No, it's, there's not supposed to be any bare dirt, it's all supposed to be sodded. Where, I'm not sure.
At what point are we supposed to be taking over, cutting the grass? 'Cause, you know, it's about two feet high out there.
I need to check on that. You, on July 17th, the county pretty much takes care of the, of, takes possession of everything, but they have a, they have a, the contractor has a requirement to maintain, to make sure the grass grows and that type of thing for a certain period of time. Let me check and see exactly what the con, the specifications say on that, Jay.
Somebody needs to cut it.
Yeah.
It looks pretty bad.
There was a requisition signed this morning, Ben came around with one to have it cut.
Okay.
By our landscape people, it's not on the contract now, that's why a PO has to be issued.
All right, thank you. I don't, I don't know if it's our property or not, but if we're looking at it, it doesn't, it's a bad look if we're sitting there looking at bare dirt with a brand-new building.
No, it's supposed, there shouldn't be any bare dirt. Um, um, the only bare dirt, and I was up there.
I guess it'd be to the, is that the north? Or which way is the building set?
It faces east.
Right, so it'd be to the north.
Right side.
Okay, they need to seed that. I, I think what you're talking about is, again, probably getting where the edge of the property line is, but they, they don't need to leave it as bare dirt.
Well, are they supposed to put something on it?
They would need to seed it if it's off the property, where it's been disturbed, but every-
That'd be their responsibility?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's off, if it's, if it's on the property, everything's being sodded. But if it's off, they need to, need to seed it. Where, whatever they disturb, typically, they're responsible for bringing it back to, to grass.
All right, any other questions?
Carl, there was some question about whether the building was, in fact, substantially complete as of the 17th, and it related to the, the extent of the punch list-
Mm-hmm.
-and the inability that the architect had to access certain areas of the building. Is there a possibility that we can discuss with you, with the contractor, whether or not we're willing to accept substantial completion as of July 17th? Or if that needs to be extended? The, the issue for me, obviously, being the warranty period, it's, my, my preference would be that we, that we look at a date that's more, that more closely approximates completion of the building.
I think everything's on the table, Craig. I will say, though, you know, I think everything's on the table with, we're sitting down with the contractor, obviously, discussion, discussing any potential damages.
Okay.
I think that would be part of it.
We'll, we'll hold that for a later discussion. I, I didn't want the board to, let me ask you this. You're asking that Jay execute, at some point, I don't know where it is on the agenda, but at some point, we're gonna, we're gonna look at accepting substantial completion on a specific date. And I'm, I'm concerned, it's item E under Ms. Lawrence's section, and I'm, I'm concerned about us executing a document indicating over the signature of Mr. Bishop. At this point, what I, what I would prefer to do is to hold that, maybe hold that item and revisit the substantial completion part of that. I'm okay with the payout and looking at all that, I'm assuming you guys are not interested in extending time. But for the purposes of item E, I just wanted to put this marker out there that we, we may wanna withhold moving to substantial completion or authorizing signature until we can get that, to get some sort of discussion underway.
Mike, tell you, had I known we had that big sizable book, how many pages is that?
Uh, well, and part of this, about 50 pages of this is the contractor's own list, probably somewhere a hundred pages, I'm not sure how many.
If we knew that, come, I don't think we'd even moved in, you know?
We, we didn't have a choice.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's the conundrum. We, you know, the, they were holding court on the 20th, and if you didn't do it, the contractor would've, could've held, he would've been in his right-
I guess it'd be very telling as to how quickly he addressed it.
We won't take-
I have emphasized to them the importance of that, I'm gonna do it again today.
I'll be honest, I'm concerned about him just walking away.
Uh, I don't think, as I said, there's 1.8 million dollars left on it.
1.8 million.
They're not, they're not walking away. But it, dragging it out is still a concern. They're not walking away. I, I, okay. If they do, the county's gonna come out ahead on that, 'cause there's not 1.8 million dollars left to work to do.
Thank you, Carl.
Uh, just one more, more thing on the chancery renovation. We met last week.
The new building?
So we're finishing those plans up, and then it'll be up to y'all if you wanna proceed with that.
When you finish them, are you gonna have a cost estimate?
Mm-hmm, I'm getting ready to update the cost estimate this week, I should have it out.
All right, good deal.
Mr. Carl, if you can write down on your notes, the copious notes you're keeping, we apparently are having some law enforcement radio connectivity issues in the new building, and so we need, we think the solution is to get an antenna to the roof. So we need to, we need to- We, we need to counsel about that, to see how we do that, how we accomplish that goal without creating a drainage problem.
Uh, we can do that. Do I need to get with Scott on that, or is that strictly just the sheriff's department?
Is Scott gonna handle that? Mr. McBroom?
Jackson Communication.
Jackson Communication.
You gotta come out and look, and the only way that we can be able to get a signal, we gotta get an antenna on top, is to hit the tower, put it through.
Does it need, it needs to be on the top of the building?
But they can't find, you know, they can't find any access to the roof.
There's an, there's an access somewhere in the town.
Well, that's what, yeah, we thought it would be, but we didn't know where, so that's what we needed to know where.
I'll show you, I, I'll send it, yeah, there is an access. But you're right, we don't need, we need to figure out how to do that upgrade.
Yeah, there's a, a process to get that done-
Be great, Paul.
-that probably does not include drilling a hole.
We, we'll get it, we'll figure out a way to get it attached without hopefully damaging the roof.
Okay.
Thank you, Carl. Next one on our agenda, we have signed up Dr. Ava Harvey.
I'll call him through, he's sitting across from me.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How's everyone this morning? Great, great, great. To, uh, J, presiding, to, uh, presiding President J Bishop and honorable board members, I'm Dr. Ava Harvey, the husband of Leslie Harvey and the father of Amari and Ava Harvey, Jr., who just recently graduated from Brandon High School. I serve as the pastor of the Pilgrim Rest Missionary Baptist Church located 925 Trickle Bridge Road in the Evergreen Community of Brandon, Mississippi. I'm a lifelong resident of Rankin County, also a graduate of Brandon High School and Wesley Biblical Seminary, as well as Jackson State University, and the Inter-Denominational Theological Center in Atlanta, Georgia, through the Morehouse School of Religion. And I came today to formally ask the Board of Supervisors to remove the Confederate monument that is currently located downtown Brandon and place it in the old Brandon cemetery, where two Mississippi governors, Robert Lowry and Aslan McLaurin, are currently lying there. I'm hopeful that you would agree, that all symbols have meanings, and some meanings can differ from the viewer's experience and interpretation. For instance, the cross of Christ can be viewed as an emblem of suffering, as well as one of redemption and victory. My opinion, the two views of the Christ are synonymous, in that it is a harmony of suffering which accomplishes redemption. Yet there are notable distinctions between these two views of the same symbol. Another example that I would lie before you is that the Nazi symbol of, of the swazika, when viewed by the white supremacists, the symbol is of purity and of the Aryan race and pride. However, when that same symbol is presented to the Jewish people, the symbol represents genocide, atrocity, and death. Incidentally, no one is erecting statues of Hitler anywhere in the world, and the swazika is a symbol that is not often seen in public spaces. One more personal example is that of a person who has been victimized by police officers. When he or she sees any police officer, the traumatic experience is an embedded psychological reality that is informed through experience, rather than of the slogan "To serve and to protect." In short, the viewer's interpretation and relational experience to his or her experience of the symbol gives an individual meaning, regardless of the original intention of the inventor of the symbol. The Rankin County Monument has a derogatory meaning to the vast majorities of African-American people within Rankin County. And yes, I do speak on behalf of the majority of African-American people who live in this county, as well as the innumerable amount who would consider Brandon as their home, who have left. Indeed, those who support the Rankin County Monument, as heritage and history have every right and freedom to hold their endearing views. Understanding history is important, and appreciating heritage is priceless, and I do not wish to erase nor diminish the historicity in memory of the thousands of hundreds of Confederate and Union soldiers who bravely fought and lost their lives for their respective causes. However, it is a historical fact that Mississippi was fighting to continue the hideous practice of enslaving Black people. With the Declaration of the Immediate Causes, which induce and justify the secession of the state of Mississippi from the Federal Union, the principal thesis is communicated in the introduction proper. I quote, "Our position is thoroughly identified with the institution of slavery, the greatest material interest of the world." It is without question that the Rankin County Confederate Monument is a symbol of Mississippi's secession position. Therefore, it is a symbol that identifies with the preservation of the institution of slavery and ignores the actual plight of African-American people by fighting to keep them relegated to a position of chattel. The horrors of being subjugated, abused, raped, castrated, molested, beaten, traded, sold, lynched, humiliated, and physically subjected to the whims and thoughts of temperament of those in power is impossible to fully imagine. And I have a copy of the Confederate Constitution, Constitution of the Confederate States of America with me today, that was signed by the congressional representatives of Mississippi in 1861, Alex M. Clayton, James T. Harris, William S. Berry, W.S. Wilson, Walker Brooks, W.P. Harris, J.A. P. Campbell. The Rankin County Confederate Monument is the embodiment of what this constitution embraces and stands for. I would like to read a few key passages that, that I think are pertinent as a part of your hearing. Article 1, Section 9 says, clause 4 prohibits Confederate government from restricting slavery in any way. It reads, "No, no bill of attainer ex post facto law or law denying or impairing the right of property in Negro slaves shall be passed." This literally, clause literally means that there could never be any bill introduced nor laws passed under the Confederacy that would free Negro slaves. Negro slaves were singled out in order to draw distinction from any other type of indentured servant. Article 4, Section 2, also in this Confederate Constitution prohibits states from interfering with slavery. I read and I quote, "The citizens of each state shall be entitled to all the privileges and immunities of citizens in the several states. They shall have the right of transit sojourn in any state of this Confederacy with their slaves and other property, and the right of property, and said slaves shall not be thereby impaired." This clause fortifies ownership of slaves as property without, without threat of impairment. Within this clause also lies the statement, the right of property in said slave, which is identifying the whole person as being enslaved. In other words, enslaved people own nothing, not even their bodies, minds, spouses, children, clothing, or manner of being. As inhumane and degrading as this directive is, it is upheld by the Confederacy. The Rankin County Confederate Monument is the embodiment of this principle, and stands as a symbol of perpetual enslavement of Negroes of race, body, mind, psyche, and manner of being. This truth is further seen in this same Confederate States Constitution, Article 4, Section 3, Clause 3. Within this clause, Negro slavery is, is to be expanded in all future territories conquered or acquired by the Confederacy. I quote, "The Confederate States may acquire new territory. Congress shall have the power to legislate and provide governments for the inhabitants of all territories belonging to the Confederate States lying within, without the limits of several states, and may permit them at such time and in such manner as it may be by law to provide, to form states to be admitted within the Confederacy, in which all territories and institution of Negro slavery as it now exists, and the Confederate States shall be recognized and protected by Congress and by the territorial government. Inhabitants of several Confederate States and territories shall have the right to take such territory any slaves lawfully held by them in any of the states or territories of the Confederate States." This is Article 4, Section 3, Clause 3. This provision not only ensures the perpetuation of slavery as long as the Confederacy exists and could expand, it also promises to protect the institution of Negro slavery perpetually. In short, Negro slaves would not only be preserved, but expanded into regions and territories conquered and acquired by the Confederate States. The lost cause of the Confederacy has sought to rewrite history and romanticize the true atrocities of the American chattel slavery of sin. According to Drew Foss, author of The Death of the American Civil War, Daughters of the Confederacy worked to shape and rewrite the history books of the South. This same organization, the Daughters of the Confederacy, also known as the United Daughters of the Confederacy, helped to bring about the erection of this very Confederate monument that is situated not far from here. In 1907, they accomplished the goal of having a Confederate soldier in a public place, in public viewing, for all to see, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for well over now 130 years. It stands to continue with what William T. Thompson, the designer of the Confederate flag, says, and I quote, "As a people, we are fighting to maintain the heaven-ordained supremacy of white men over the inferior or colored race. As a national emblem, it is signifying of a higher cause and the cause of the superior race," end quote. The Confederacy fought to preserve a way of life that was rooted in enslaved labor, and was based on several non-scientific presuppositions, some of which are stated in the Mississippi cessation article when it joined the Confederacy, and I quote- "The black race can bear exposure to the tropical sun, and the imperious laws of nature dictate that black people are not equally socially nor naturally in compliance and coordination with this Confederacy." Alexander Stephens, Vice President of the Confederacy, made this statement on the very day that the Civil War, upon which many brave men lost their lives from the South as well as the North. The Vice President of the Confederacy says this, "Many governments have been founded upon the principles of the subordination of serfdom, certain classes of the same race which were in violation of the laws of nature. Our system commits no such violation of nature's laws. With us, all of the white race, however low or high, rich or poor, are equal in the eye of law. Not so with the Negro. Subordination is his place. He by nature, or by the curse against Canaan, is fitted for that condition which he occupies in our system. The architect and construction of building lays the foundation in proper material, the granite which comes to brick or the marble. The substratum of our society is made of material fitted by nature for it, and by experience we know it is best, not only for the superior but for the inferior race, that it should be so. It is indeed in conformity with the ordinance of the Creator. It is not for us to inquire unto wisdom of His ordinance or to question them. For His own purpose, He has made one race to differ from another, as He has made one start to differ from another in glory. The great objects of humanity are best attained when there is conformity to His laws and decrees in the formation of government as well as in all things else. Our Confederacy is founded upon this principle in strict conformity with these laws." This is Vice President Alexander Stevenson of the Confederacy. Through the very words and actions of the Confederate leaders, the Confederate Constitution, the Daughters of the Confederacy, and also the United Daughters of the Confederacy, the Mississippi Sessation Declaration, and the Rankin County Board of Supervisors and City of Brandon leaders during the time which the Rankin County Confederate Monument was erected, as well as those possessing political power within Rankin County today, the minority community is forced to live with these conditions. The Rankin County Confederate Monument and those whom embrace and support its continued occupancy at the current location are not calculating the real and true inhumane deprivation of black people as human beings. This monument, for me and for the vast majority of African-Americans within this very county, represents the innumerable atrocities imposed upon our ancestors. And it should go without saying, but I would clearly state it as clearly as I can, I am a black man, and I am a human being. And there is one race, and it is the human race. But my fellow brothers and sisters of less pigmentation, and melanin did to our people, melanin did to our people was immoral and sinful. In most cases, the very Bible itself was used as a means to justify the barbaric and inhumane treatment of people of color. The psychological effect continues today on the people in our community with the constant reminder imposed upon us each time we drive through the very city, the heartbeat of Brandon, Mississippi. It has become my prayerful task to begin the process, to work to have this monument moved to another location. I have no desire to defame or destroy the true history, the legacy, and all those who hold that symbol as dear and as a part of the lost cause. But my goal as a believer in Jesus Christ, a Bible-believing pastor, is to seek conciliation, to have the burden of truth, to speak to power, and that is why I am here today. I'm here today to speak to those who seat and sit in the very seat of power. I strongly believe that it has come to time for Rankin County to heal by moving forward. And I'm committing to do my part to work with either of you and all of you that God's grace may continue to shine upon this very favored county of ours. History will judge what we do, what we're going forward with or what we remain with. My faith is not limited to the here and now. A greater judge will one day examine the motives of each of us. He will search our hearts, and the words of Christ Himself in St. Luke 10 and 26, what is written in the law, how do you read it? "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, your soul, your strength, and your mind, and your neighbor as yourself." His very words in St. Matthew 25 and 45 speak. I say unto you, so much as you have done it to the least of these, you have done it unto me. Words of the prophet Micah 6 and 8 says, "He has showed you, O man, what is good, and what does the Lord require of you to do justly, to love mercy, to walk humbly with your God." Again, I'm asking, in closing, formally asking the Rankin County Board of Supervisors to take upon the task to remove the Rankin County Memorial Monument and place it in the old Brandon Cemetery. For several reasons, not only is it discriminatory and derogatory to black people, stands in a public place endorsing the symbol of white supremacy, which is supported and upheld by the Confederacy, situated in a public place that is funded by taxpayers of this very county, is maintained on public space by taxpayers of this county. The Daughters of the Confederacy have been given a platform since 1907 for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to freely speak by that monument, with their names endorsed to it. There are no monuments in Rankin County anywhere representing blacks, minorities, or people of color that are within the same space as this monument that has been erected. A significant amount of money was allocated to make this happen, for erection of this monument, and continues to be paid through the landscaping and maintenance of this area where it is located. I have unsuccessfully tried to access the minutes of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors from 1905 to 1908 without success. I'm prayerfully asking that I could have a copy of those meeting. I'm organizing another unity rally here to be held at the courthouse on August 21st, where I'll be asking leaders and citizens of our community in Rankin County to stand together for the removal of this monument. I'm not interested in any type of fame or public notice, but what I am interested in is your consideration. Thank you all for your time, and I appreciate this opportunity to share my concern on behalf of the African-American community here in Rankin County.
Thank you, Dr. Harvey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can definitely tell you give a good sermon. We will definitely take your request and our consideration.
God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all have a great day.
All right, next on our agenda, we have the minutes to approve from July 15th, 22nd, and 30th.
So move.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Brad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. What's in the agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? Yeah, I'm just gonna make one comment. Feel like Pearl's getting short in her stick on all these repairs of the schools.
Who?
Potholes, you know? I need to step up my game.
Did they don't have many potholes? Did they send a letter? I mean, they sent a letter for what they wanted, didn't they?
Yeah, they requested some gravel.
I know, I saw that, but...
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Come on, Mr. Sullivan. Don't want to hold you from the pool any longer.
I heard that. I'm ready to get to it. One margarita, two margaritas, three margaritas, shot. Adam A. acknowledged receipt of the ejection of 2020 tax assessments. We got 24 right now. They have till five o'clock today, so we'll probably have some more.
When will we be, I need to address?
Next meeting.
Okay. Okay, have a motion to accept this?
So move.
Or acknowledge.
Acknowledge, yeah.
All right, motion by Jared.
We're not gonna accept him.
All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
John, I got a question. I was trying to look at it. I don't understand.
You probably, I mean, not being ugly, you probably wouldn't.
Uh-huh. Well, I mean, these revised land and improvement, revised...
That's all if we settle, on what they would like. You see, if you go down to one of them, we already made them happy with a change in value. Those two right there.
About six down?
Yeah.
I guess.
And I don't see, just like your first one, Lowe's, that's a T if it won't change. And Coles is a T if it won't change. Home Depot is a T if it won't change. Kroger, it's not gonna change. There's a bunch of them on here that...
Why would they be opposing if it's not gonna change? That's what I...
They're doing their...
Probably getting prepared for when it does roll off.
Well, it's just, it's their right to protest.
I mean, I understand that, but I guess Jay's saying, I understand that.
Yeah.
But the rest of these that have no value...
That just means we haven't reached an agreement, and then I will be coming before y'all, and they will bring their tax rep in here. And then you will hear their side of the argument, and then you'll hear my side of the argument. And hopefully, you'll think my side of the argument's better. It will definitely be better for Rankin County.
Okay.
So if everyone doesn't have a value, we can expect to see them properly?
Well, y'all had negotiated with those.
Oh, yeah.
You have?
You can expect to receive a written objection statement along with supporting documentation. That is what they are required to provide.
To say?
To substantiate their request for a different value. John is going to explain to you why you should ignore that. If they don't submit supporting documentation, you will automatically accept John's assessment.
Okay. It will be interesting.
All right, moving on to the next one. B.
Petition changed assessment, 2019 real property assessment rule.
So move.
Motion by Steve. Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Adam C., D., and E. can probably handle together. These were erroneous assessments, either going to the City of Flowood or just erroneous assessments, and need people with it.
So move.
Motion by Steve. Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Thank you, John. Ms. Herring.
Good morning.
Good morning. My first item this morning, I'm requesting approval of a copier contract with Rico USA for the purchasing department.
No motion? Oh, there is one, sorry.
Second.
Motion by Jared. Second by Steve.
We won't be able to work.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The second item, I'm requesting authority to add the new Chancery Justice Facility to our pest control contract with Safeguard Pest Management. The cost will be an extra $100 per month remaining term of the agreement.
We already have rats, huh?
We already have rats?
I was asking.
Oh, I hadn't heard, just danced, but no, I haven't heard about that.
So move.
Motion by Steve. Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, Mike. Ready to hear about some roadwork accomplished.
Roadwork accomplished.
Steve wanted to hear a little diatribe.
If you don't have it prepared in the future, I mean, if you could do it today.
Yes, sir.
Just, and not down to potholes or culverts or patching something here or there. Can you give us, this road was whatever application you put on it, and then we're planning to do this on these roads?
I'll give you that right now.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we're finishing up chip seal today. We've done District One, Three, and Four. I can give you the roads we've done, if you want the roads. But we've done about 20 miles of chip seal in the county this year. We're gonna start fog sealing tomorrow.
How much is that this month?
All of it since March, March of July.
We did 20 miles in one month?
Yes, sir.
For chip seal?
Yes, sir.
That's getting at it.
We're coming back with the fog seal right now. We're...
On those same roads, right?
On the same roads, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, with the COVID deal, kinda had the plant messed up, so we chose to... They had to make the fog seal, so instead of making one load here and there, we decided to wait and get it all at one time. So we'll be starting that. Just, we're pretty well through with the Civil Link bond money that y'all allocated for us. That's pretty well done. Got a little bit in the in-house budget. We'll be catching some spot roads. It's not much. We got about $300,000 left to do in that for the remainder of the budget, Steve.
On chip seal?
No, sir, on just probably some micro and some ultra-thin we're gonna be doing in the county. This is fine. This is fine, yeah. I thought that's what you said, yes, sir. Other than that, I mean, besides our regular routine stuff, we're trying to finish up the school stuff. We got a lot of, I mean, I've had to pull crews off of maintenance, try to get these schools patched up and done, so we're gonna get a little behind on work orders.
Well, only schools, you got that McLaurin and the fuck, of course. Probably all of them getting something, being built on. How can you go in there and fix the road if they're daily coming in and out in concrete trucks and...
Patch it the best we can, Brad. We're digging it out. I mean, just patching it the best we can, you know? Ongoing projects, we've got some bridge work that should be going. I'm gonna say in next month, we should be putting in two of our bridges, or that's what I'm shooting for. We're fixing to do a turnaround on Garrett Farm, Garrett Farm Road. And then we got Pine Brook East and West deal. That'll be a shutdown right there. We won't do a turnaround right there. And then I reckon I'm gonna lean on my engineer right there a little bit on Greenfield, but I think that's the next one in place on it. We're just having to do, we're having to do a... Come on, let me out here. Damn the flooding problem.
Study.
Study.
We're doing hydraulics on them.
We're having to do a hydraulic on that one because of the flooding in that area, Jay. Make sure we...
There's a flood zone adjacent to that bridge, so... All right. Do I have a motion approved, work accomplished, scheduled?
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Take B and C as AT&amp;T permit for fiber. Ones on Gooley, ones on Pine Brook.
All right.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
And to construct and approve a utility interline data installed between Span and Spillway Road for Community Bank over there.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion?
And that's an internal line for Community Bank theirself.
Yeah, inline, I didn't know they were still going. That's that deal where they come by and you can actually pay for the whole fiber yourself. You own it.
Right.
They gave us that opportunity several years ago to do one to down to Pilatus at the juvenile court. It was a pretty steep number, though.
Yeah, I didn't know either, Jay, until the other day they submitted this. So I didn't know they still did it.
Did y'all find out anything else on Andrew Chapman, on the contractor?
Yes, yes.
Hang on, let's get through, let's vote for this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Tell them, Mike, he met with, or he had on the phone call, whatever, with the contractor, and they are out there, and their sub or Dirk guy supposed to be there Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, I'm saying you, and it was actually Tim's people, I think, that talked to him. They, I think they understand where we're at and weather, great weather, two to three weeks. But according to, we get some rain with this dirt, they'll be out of there by the end of August, which should be okay with us. If they can do that and have the concrete finished and all, it won't hold us up any longer.
Just the bridge?
Yeah.
And that's what we're hoping on Jared on Gunner Road also by the end of August. We've got that buttoned up.
As far as the contractor and all the punch lists he's got, correct?
Yes, sir. He's got the job cleared, but he's got some quite a bit of dressing up to do on that job.
Lot of spots cleaning.
Yes, sir.
One particular.
Well, several of them, he's kind of fiddling it in his face, but telling him the clock was ticking on him. So, on that, and then him... Uh, on that, and then him, Phil, I talked to him, Phil, uh.
They're actually here today, weren't they? Daniel's not here.
Are they there?
He left, cause Daniel.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. All right, well, we can move on forward then. Thank you, Jay.
All right. Ms. Parker.
That's funny.
Thank you, Mr. President, we have one item today. It is, uh, on Crossview Plantation Phase Two. We recommend an approval of the final plat and letters of credit in the amount of a hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. That's a District Four property.
Um, I make a motion, let me do that first, I make a motion, we, uh, approve.
All right, motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion?
Yep. On Crossview Plantation Phase One.
Yes, sir.
We are not, we have not finally released them, have we?
That is correct, we're still holding a letter of credit on, uh, Phase One. Uh, the contractor got, he, he went ahead and did the paving without, uh, final inspection, so we haven't released the letter of credit and, uh, so he, we're, we're still holding a letter.
How much is that letter of credit? About?
I, I don't remember, Steve, I.
Is it, but it's sufficient to?
Oh, yes, sir, it's gonna be, it, it's gonna be, it was, I don't think it was in the two times, I think it was in the one and a half times. So whatever the surface asphalt was, it would have been one and a half times that. And, uh, that should, based on asphalt prices, that should certainly be sufficient to, uh.
You're gonna hold it for enough time that, to see if they're?
We're gonna hold it until the developer requests and then we'll start talking about, uh, what we gotta do.
I mean, that's pretty much our warranty.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because we didn't get to see it before he put the file, I mean, we didn't get to do a final inspection before he put the final asphalt on, so.
He understands that.
Uh, he hasn't argued, he hasn't argued nor has he requested for it to be released.
But no, I'm talking about, he understands that he should have asked for an inspection before he poured.
Mr. Gaines, I, I hope he understands, he's been told multiple times.
Tell him one more time.
We certainly will, on, on this one, we'll remind him as he goes through the process that.
I'd like for him to say, I understand.
Is this not?
Maybe sign, maybe sign a piece of paper.
Yeah, that, and we're doing, we're proving Phase Two.
Yes.
Get started, before we get down the road at all, I want him to understand.
We'll, we'll have multiple conversations with him through the process before he gets close to where he could put the final asphalt on, that, uh, that we need to do a final inspection.
Mr. Parker would not say this, certainly wouldn't say it in a public board meeting, so I'll say it for him. This is a house builder who has stepped off into developer, subdivision developer activity. Without a clear understanding of what that looks like and how you do that.
I mean, it's, it's a really nice neighborhood.
It's a, he has done a. Yes.
It's an asset to that road.
No question.
Right past, uh.
What road?
Hollybush.
Just, just past Buddy and Em's place, McLean's.
Yeah.
It's that big, nice division, they have a site you'd get way home from there.
Okay, yeah.
Outstanding house builder. Jury's still out on, on subdivision developer ability.
Right.
But hopefully he's figuring it out as we go. So in the meantime, we're holding letters of credit.
Absolutely. We didn't vote.
Nope, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye.
I got a more question.
Yes, sir.
Not on this, but, um. Long reason. We, we approve, it's all filed.
Yes.
I can let him know that, I mean, is anything, we, do we ever take it in the minutes that we have accepted that route?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything left, I think the letter of credit has been released, I, I don't think there's anything.
I mean, do we need to have some kind of official acceptance for the record, show that we, we've accepted it? He just contacted me over the weekend and, and I can see his point, he clearly didn't know.
And, and I, I think that's there, Jared, I, I just, I, it's been several weeks since I looked at that and, and I need to, I need to go back and brush up on it.
Double check that, I mean, I can see from his point, he just needs some acknowledgement.
Yeah, it's, it's the one where the cul-de-sac at the end, they went back and added a cul-de-sac.
Right.
Uh, cause it was gonna be a Phase Two.
Yeah, but he put the final surfaces and all around and spent out some time.
Yep, it would, it wouldn't hurt for us to make sure Tim needs to be satisfied that it's ready.
Yeah.
But, uh, assuming that everything's been handled, it wouldn't hurt being to slip that on the next agenda, just simply satisfy what's set is in that area.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see.
I'll verify that, but I, 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 that may have been already, already done.
I mean, I, yeah, I, I don't remember it either, I wasn't sure, he didn't, didn't know either.
Do we ever vote on any of that? I don't think we ever do.
Generally, it's, it's automatic with the acceptance of the client apply.
Yeah.
Well, that may be, I just hadn't, I wasn't wa- he, he asked, I wasn't aware, I wanna be sure, just double check.
I'll check on it, yes, sir.
So he'll know, just give peace of mind.
You brought up cul-de-sac. Uh, do you know where we're at, Mike may need to answer this also, but J.C. Taylor, uh.
Wait.
Turnaround or whatever.
Yes, sir, uh, we, those right away documents have been prepared, uh, I don't know if the, they've been executed or not.
Probably not.
Property owners.
Let's try to get it before we get into the wet season. I mean, that's a garbage truck, school buses, even mail, try to turn around in there and they've done everything that we've asked.
Are those, we're waiting on signatures, except for J.C. Taylor.
What are you getting, no?
It's a private road.
No.
No.
It's just a.
There, there's another name for that road too, it's Green.
The road just.
Greenbrier, uh, uh, that maybe.
That's why I didn't recognize it.
Right.
And all they're asking, nothing's not really the name, but it's just a school.
Get it up, turn around.
That's the three.
I wouldn't find a chip seal, why, just a school bus, that's where it was. So is the Devon not gonna extend it?
They're just doing a circle, I mean, not a circle, but.
I mean, but it's not gonna be developed further?
Oh, no, the, a man owns the land, I think, that has.
There's a house at the, there's actually multiple houses.
There's three houses.
Yes, sir.
That just come off a truncated road that just stops. And the, I mean, the big thing is turning a garbage truck down or, or bus or.
Will you?
And they tear up the people's property trying to knife it back and forth.
Will we vote on that yet? Will we vote on this?
Yeah, he's done it.
You are done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Mr. Lake. Steve, that road is also known as Greenbrier, that's why I didn't recognize it right off when you said it.
That's right.
Um, and so those documents and notifications to the property, the affected property owners went out probably two months ago. Uh, with instructions that as soon as the property owners were able to actually come to the building during Oz virus junk. Uh, you know, we, we encourage them, contact the county to be sure that you can come up here. And generally the way we handle that process, because it requires a notary, is we require them to come up here and sign.
Yeah.
Where we got notaries and then we can immediately take the original and instrument and get it in the land records and give them back a copy. Uh, if they want a copy, but that's generally how we handle it.
We're just talking about the right of way around it.
See, it's three property owners that are impacted.
Yeah.
Each of the three property owners is required to donate a small section of the road frontage, what would be the road frontage. But they have to give us that right of way, so they've been contacted, shown an instrument and told to communicate with Ms. Janus to get it executed. I have no clue whether or when they might actually come up here to get that done. But that's, that's generally how we handle the process because it has to be recorded in the land records.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll try to revisit with those folks if we need to.
I will too.
Yes, sir, so they were, they were sent a letter to the, to their mailing address with the copy of the instrument.
You know, school hadn't been going and.
Right.
Garbage only picks up about once a month, so it hadn't.
Had mid-pressing.
You know, and it hadn't, we're not in the wintertime.
Right.
But it'll happen.
Yes, sir.
And then they'll be going, Steve, you told us a year ago.
That's a good point, absolutely. Well, we, we, the staff's done what they could do to get that moved and I, my assumption's gonna be that it has to do with not wanting to come up here and, and be around folks. That, that would be my assumption, so, but that is only an assumption. Mr. President, first item under my section today is, uh, is A, B, and C, I've asked to take together. Public hearings to be set for August seventeen, nine AM. One is for, uh, the Moore Conditional Use Permit, the Nichols Conditional Use Permit, and the S and B Real Estate Conditional Use Permit.
Okay.
I'll set those.
Motion by Jared?
Second.
Second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye.
Item D is a public hearing on the Lloyd Sims Conditional Use Permit. Ms. Janus? We're gonna see if anybody's out there on that.
Has anybody said anything to build a park?
Hi, Craig.
No one here.
Oh, go ahead then.
All right.
I was gonna say while we're waiting, but.
Yes, so we'll open that public hearing. Uh, Lloyd Sims is seeking a conditional use permit for a three thousand square foot metal building house at two oh five six Sunset Ridge. Sunset Ridge is a private road in Indian Mountain Subdivision. This Sims owns thirty-three point five acres of property zone RE one, RE one does not allow for a metal exterior after completion. Mr. Sims indicated that he may add brick siding about halfway up the structure. So that hearing is open, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to Lloyd Sims Conditional Use Permit, anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter, we'll close the public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action by, uh, either approving it with no conditions or setting conditions.
This is a dead end road, gravel road, and of course, I know Craig said it's Indian Mountain Subdivision. This is off the Indian Mine, it's not where all the houses are being built on this, this is kinda off of, a road off of the main road. And, uh, like I said, nobody's complained and there are metal buildings around there. I, I think it's a couple of metal houses already on Thornton Road now. That was done years ago that you see from the road, but this one's probably two miles off the main road, dead end.
I don't think any of us have issues with people doing it, it's just the fact that it's aggravating and disturbing that people go do it and then they ask for a permission address there, you know?
Well, when he contacted me, the slab was poured. And that's when he came to the building department thing and been working with the building department.
Oh, ever since when is? So y'all got to inspect all of it?
We haven't gotten to inspect it all, um, I actually thought the building was already up, I might be wrong, but we didn't check the foundation, it was already poured.
Right.
We didn't do any formal inspections, and so we haven't been able to do all the inspections, now he did get his engineered, um, plans, the plans are kind of stamped by nature.
In the past.
It wasn't enclosed when I seen it, now, this has been a couple of months ago, I, it might have had a roof, like a pole bar.
Yeah.
Type, but the slab that, when I was out there, the slab been poured and plumb and been stuffed up.
In, in the past, what is it? How do we, uh, rather than, you know, is there something added to the deed that we can say that this was not, you know, approved or inspected?
Yeah, not that it would make a bit of difference, Jay, because, uh, the truth of the matter is, when, once it's out of the barn like that.
It's no doubt anyway.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a known issue for us and, and just by getting them to certify that they didn't tell us anything, that doesn't help us with secondary owners. It certainly doesn't help us with miners who have no way to protect themselves if a minor child got injured down there because of some, uh, insubstantial portion of the building collapsed or something like that. We knew ahead of time that it wasn't constructed to, to meet our requirements. I, we're, we're still in the loop of potential.
I just remember back, Bill Brandon was here, there was something that was done along construction and it was to the point where he wanted to make sure that something entered, showed that.
Yes.
If they requested a C O, they'd know that we didn't do any inspections, so they could have consequences.
Yeah.
Generally, what we do, um, what has, has seemed to us to be somewhat workable a, as a solution to this, obviously, we dou- we double the permit fee. So we make them pay in the nature of a fine when they get ahead of us like this. Often times, we have, uh, I say often times, in the past, we have required the, either the general contractor or the property owner to give us access so that we can conduct post-completion inspections, cut holes in the wall, in sheet rock. We, we've made them do that in the past. Uh, but probably the best solution that I've been able to, to find is that we require them, in these cases like this where it's a metal structure, we require them to provide us with engineered drawings. That way, we've got the stamp of a professional engineer on the drawings that indicates that the building would in fact meet our wind load requirement primarily. Uh, and any other requirements that are set out under the code. The engineer puts his name on the line and his liability on the line by stamping those drawings. And so we, we found that to be a workable solution.
And we got those, right?
Yes.
I, I was just more concerned about our liability, you know, down the road.
Yes.
Second, third buyer, what have you.
Yes.
As long as we don't have any, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's, no, no, we do, a- and we cannot rid ourselves of it when it's a situation where they have gotten ahead of us and we've not been able to do our inspections on the front end. There is liability exposure, I would tell you as legal counsel that it is low. It is not substantial in terms of a liability risk, but it is troubling that there could be a bad result. A wind event that was bad but should not have been bad enough to bring it down and somebody gets hurt. There is exposure there if we've not been able to do our.
Electrical fire.
Yes.
But we've done all our inspections on the rest, right?
I'm like, I hadn't been back out there to look, I don't know where he.
Well, it's not necessarily talking about just this one, but any coming up, how do, how do we lessen our liability for a situation like this where somebody's already built the whole thing out? Is there anything we can do to document, to get us off the hook, so to speak?
You can tell them to remove the structure and start over.
It's not what he asked you.
I knew what he was really asking.
I knew what you were gonna say, I knew you were gonna ask it that way.
Correct.
Okay.
You start again and you get it right to begin with, and, and this is why it's important, I think, that we continue to communicate with the community, that we have an inspection regimen for pretty much any residential or commercial building in the county. We ought to have an opportunity to make sure it's being constructed within code compliance.
I don't think we're ever gonna tell somebody to tear their building down, but.
Yeah, so what we've done is we've attempted, uh, to get access to some critical portions of the building. Some areas that would be, uh, likely to cause issues. So if we can look at wiring, if we can look at Joyce, help me out here, Dwayne. We can look at other critical infrastructure of that building that supports loads. Uh, those are the, the areas where we like to get access. So in a case like this where this gentleman has already gotten ahead of us.
Right.
I, you know, if, if, if we can, if we can get access to some of those critical points, then that should eliminate even the low risk. At that point, we can document that although it was after the fact, we did in fact get eyes on the ground and we saw what was being included. We can, and we can sta- substantially cover ourselves by getting access. It's, it's troubling to the property owner, they have to cut holes in sheet rock.
Yeah.
And so it's an extra expense to them, but it's not our fault. Uh, I think it's a small price to pay for their failure to do it according to our process.
Right.
That's what we try to do. Okay?
Sorry, Brad.
That was the end of. I, I don't know if you guys, did y'all, did y'all vote on that?
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye.
Mr. President, if I can indulge, I wanted to, uh, update the board.
All right, what, what?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, there it is. Aye.
Now we vote on it, aye, all right.
Okay. Mr. President, if I may, if you'll indulge me, I wanna give you guys a, an update on some activity that's, uh, that is pertinent and recent. Uh, on Friday afternoon, this has to do with the Andrew Chapel Road Project and Gunner Road Project. On Friday afternoon about four o'clock.
Thursday. It's Thursday.
Thursday afternoon, my bad, yes, Thursday afternoon, we got a, uh. We got letters from Entergy.
You don't know what the Southern Pine is?
Entergy Mississippi LLC concerning both the Andrew Chapel Road Project and the Gunner Road Project. Okay. All right. Uh, and so, uh, the, the communication from Entergy with respect to, and we'll start with Andrew Chapel. I'm taking them alphabetically.
I don't know.
Energy contacted us and submitted what they are calling a utility relocation agreement. And they are asking, I guess, I guess they're asking, uh, they are indicating to Rankin County that, um, they will not be in a position to do anything with respect to Andrew Chapel Utility Relocation until the county has executed the relocation agreement. That agreement calls for Rankin County. That agreement calls for Rankin County to pay to Entergy the sum of $784,321.48.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. That amount is broken down as follows. There is a total relocation cost for this project, of which Rankin County is being required to pay 74.42% of it. The total relocation cost is a million and fifty-three dollars and nine hundred and twelve. One oh five three nine one two. That breaks down as material cost of 115,000. I'm gonna round these figures off.
That, that's what we need to pay.
The material.
The material is 115,000. We need to pay 75% of that.
Yeah.
The labor cost is 405,000 dollars. Their equipment cost is 232,000 dollars. And this one's really good. Corporate overhead, 301,000 dollars.
What would that be?
I would love to know. I have absolutely no clue what that is.
Corporate overhead. Sounds like going to bonuses.
Yeah. Yep. That total, those four itemized expenses total 1,053 dollars, almost 1,054. Energy's gonna kick in 270 and they want Rankin County to kick in 785.
And Craig, this, we're not asking them or making them move all their poles and lines, are we?
Actually, actually, they are preparing to move every line and pole and utility service out there.
But that's not our demand.
That's, our position is that they don't have to do that, Steve. You're exactly right. Their position is that they do. Okay? They're taking the position, and the reason that they want Rankin County to pay 75% is because right now, today, the poles that are out there, before this project ever started, before any right of way was acquired, all of those poles were on private easement. Huh? No. I'm talking about before the project ever got started. All of the poles were on private easement. When we acquired our right of way, we put some of their poles inside of newly acquired right of way.
No, the, the seventy-four percent comes from what was within the right of way.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
Then their position is even worse.
That's, I mean, you can look and tell. They got to be in our right of way when you can reach out the window and touch them.
Now, when we had to pay Energy upfront on the South Pearson project, which was nowhere in the realm, which I think is more like 50 or 60,000 dollars.
Woo!
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah. And, but that was only because they had purchased the right of way, you know? And that was the only reason we had to pay any fee.
Yes. Similarly here, I'm now being told that 75% of the poles out there before the project started were on Entergy-owned easements. Utility easements. Okay? So, they had acquired those at some point in the distant past as actual easements. When we.
Not that they necessarily paid for it, but they got.
They, they have private easements in place as we developed the project and acquired right of way. Those poles now are gonna end up being on publicly owned right of way. Most of which, 75% of which, we've acquired. And now, as of today, all of it. We've acquired every right of way on Andrew Chapel. There is no more right of way, waiting on right of way acquisition. We're done with that. Okay? So.
Forty years.
Because of that requirement, Entergy is saying, we've now got to get out of, off of county right of way. This is what they're saying. We want to get off of county right of way, which means we gotta go buy more right of way, then move our poles to that acquired right of way. And we want to do that for every parcel on the project.
Do they feel they need to go on the private if we have?
Because they can.
I, I think they've decided that they can acquire a right of way now. What I briefly looked at, it looked like they're gonna be in our right, you right of way.
Oh, really?
Oh, in our right of way? Our and you right of way?
So, we can charge them after some.
Yeah, I haven't seen the, the relocation. What I, what I briefly looked at and what I talked to the engineer, he told me the other day, they were struggling to get private easement out there. But it looked like they were trying to get the county.
That's interesting. That's interesting. So, they want to move on, stay on our right of way, but we get, we get to pay for it.
Is there a problem in being on our right of way?
Well, we've.
No, I mean, is there a problem in anything other than?
As long as they're out of the way of construction, I say absolutely no problem whatsoever. I'll defer to the engineer. But my position is, as long as they're out of the way of construction activity, I, they're welcome to be in our right of way.
Right. No, I mean, that's very common for them to be in the right of way. So, we would have to look at it on a case by case. We don't, we don't want them in the middle of the ditch or something like that.
Right.
Obviously, they're gonna have to work without construction plans if they're gonna stay within the right of way. And there's obviously gonna be some stipulations, probably may grow as we talk with that dollar figure.
Yes.
But let, let, let's think about this. They've been providing electricity to those people on that road and pass that road with those telephone poles and lines for probably, I don't know how long. But it, I mean, let's say probably some of those lines and telephone poles are 30, 40 years old. Or more. Or more. And they've been sitting there making millions of dollars off selling electricity and we've never charged them one dollar. And they've been, a lot of them have been right on our right of way and running right down our roads. They come down those roads to service those lines if they get something that goes out. We've never said, hey, you're not gonna run your truck down here without paying us. We've gotten along fine all these years. And this is the worst traveled collector road in Rankin County. It's very diversified. Some very big wealthy people live out there and probably some of the poorest live on the same road. And these people have rode on something that is unsafe. And here we are finally getting the money to do something with this. And this huge corporate that has a $300,000 built-in buffer in there is gonna say, you owe us $700,000. That's wrong as it can be. And when they're out there working, if they would happen to crack the shoulder of the road, what do we do? Fix it? They, they're, when trees fall on their lines, we're there right before they ever get there, waiting on them to where they'll turn electricity off. To where we can let them fix them. A lot of things will change if we have to pay that. First, we can't fix the road until we get enough money, maybe from permits and things like that, if they want to play like that. I'm done.
Okay. So, that's, that's good news and, and here's the, here's the rest of the good news.
Yeah, give me a shot.
So, on the Gunner Road project, similarly, we have a request for 309,000 dollars. The material cost on Gunner Road, 22,000. Labor is 166,000. Equipment is 77,000. And they're giving us a break on corporate overhead, only 106,000.
Oh, I see.
The total of that is 371,592 dollars. That's the total relocation cost. Rankin County gets to pay 83.33% of that.
Now, that's just Energy now going to Southern Pine.
Yeah, that's Entergy. Southern Pine, this is, this is a situation where you've got two different electric service providers who have certificated area that is impacted by the road construction. So, Entergy's certified area cuts off at a point in the project, Southern Pine picks up. And we don't have an official document yet from Southern Pine.
Oh, really?
But we're hearing that they are, they're going to attempt the same maneuver that, that Entergy is attempting. They will in fact ask for and demand a utility relocation reimbursement and agreement from the county. We don't have a figure.
I mean, I don't know how much out there is Southern Pine, how much is Energy. Where at the start of time?
By, I have no idea. Rob's still out back toward 469 is Southern Pine.
They take in Shenandoah then?
Yes.
From there.
It's right there somewhere.
I got you. They're basically Shenandoah, uh, east.
I talked to Southern Pine the other day. I was there with a guy and just happened to run across them. Uh, they hadn't quite got their figures together. They gave me kind of a estimated number. Uh, they're gonna be getting probably off right of way on us. Uh, that's what they're talking about.
The way the, the law reads.
Right on the edge of right of way. They're gonna try to set their poles on the edge of right of way and fire them and get them put where I was coming.
The way the law reads is that if their current infrastructure is on private property, I'll just use that because it's simpler. If their current infrastructure is situated on private property and we ask them to relocate because we are expanding the right of way, the public right of way, they can ask us to pay for the relocation that is going from private to private. That's what they want to do. That's what you just heard Mike say that Southern Pine wants to do. They're currently on private property. They want to acquire additional private property and they want to situate their infrastructure there. They can ask the public to pay for that. Why would they do that? Because if we ask them to move again, guess what happens? They're on private. And they get paid to move it again.
So, that's why they probably want to be in the public.
Correct.
No.
And if they are on public right of way to begin with and we tell them, we need you to relocate because we are improving this road, they are required to pay for all of the relocation, regardless of whether they go to private or just further deeper into what would be the public right of way. What we have offered to Entergy is that we will allow them to stay in the public right of way, relocate out of the way of construction activity, but stay in the public. Don't have to go acquire additional right of way. You don't have to go acquire additional easement. You can stay in the public. And we will agree in writing that if we ever come back and ask you to move again, we will pay you to relocate from public.
Right.
To private. We will pay you at that time. That's what we've offered to do for them. And they, they have not responded.
If we offer to pay for the, it sounds like we pay for the material. But it's just like Steve, just no different year, Steve. Only it's probably more houses on that road, that stretch of road that have been paying like, just like you're saying. We had 90-something parcels on that road. And every one of those are residential.
The reason that we're having this conversation today is to, is basically because you guys know we're, we're trying to push these projects as quickly as we can. There's a couple of issues that we've got to keep in mind. Both of these projects are being funded through bond funds. Those have short fuses. We've got to get the majority of the funding spent within a designated timeframe, so you know what we're dealing with. Y'all heard that. You understand that. It's been on the forefront of your minds. You're thinking about that appropriately. So, and what we've now found is that unfortunately, these utilities aren't burdened by, by that responsibility that we have. And kind of get the impression that they don't mind dragging their feet for eight months. We are almost eight months from the day that Entergy heard about both of these projects, along with every other utility who would be impacted by both of these projects, December the 19th. They sat in this room and they heard, it's coming, get yourselves together. And so, on July the 30th, we get the first indication from Entergy of what we are about to pay for the privilege of them getting out of our way. So, I'm, I'm offended by that.
Good.
That, that we've been unfortunately mistreated by a corporate entity that loves to throw its weight around, be quite honest with you. I expected more. I expected better. We're not getting it. All right? So, that, that's disturbing to me. It's also short sighted. Steve, to your point, I can't tell you how much cooperative effort goes unnoticed between your road department and these utility providers especially. Those are points of connection and potential conflict that happen every day in this county. And we have consistently, as long as it's local people, people that understand Rankin County and have an appreciation for Rankin County, as long as that's what's happening at the corporate level, we seem to get, we seem to get good service there, good cooperation. We don't have problems. We get it worked out. Unfortunately, Entergy has taken a whole different approach to this from a corporate standpoint. It appears to us that the vast majority of their decisions are coming out of New Orleans. When we try to get local communication going, invariably, we're told, you need to call New Orleans. It's just, it's, it's gotten out of hand. And this, this is exhibit A of how not to be a good corporate citizen. It's exhibit A. I'm offended by it. We don't have a million dollars laying around for, or 1.1 million dollars laying around for two road projects.
Might be two million depending on what Southern Pine.
That's what I meant earlier when we were talking about this money, how things go over in projects. No one ever anticipated this.
Absolutely not.
Can we not talk to, not that doing any good, but I think we need to have a real talk with our service manager.
Brad? I will.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be glad to.
Me too. This is.
I don't mind coming in here, wherever we need to talk. This is, this is absurd.
Well.
Just like you said, we, these people have been, they have been poles changed on that, on Gunner Road that I can remember.
So, we got this information on Thursday afternoon at four o'clock. And we have not had an opportunity, obviously, until this morning to share this information with you guys. So, there's been no response to any of this as if they needed a response. But my suggestion would be that we formulate a response to this and then develop a, you know, a plan to try to address this.
They really don't care if we don't do it.
No, they're, they're fine to just move on to the next thing.
So, what would happen if a truck actually run over some of them lines whilst being constructed?
I, I'm sure we get a, we get a communication from a third-party collector in Minnesota. Indicating to us how much damage we did.
So, on a serious note, can we not hire a company to go run the line, post at the poles?
We can't touch utility, uh, utility infrastructure that belongs to, to a public utility. We, we cannot.
I'm not talking about changing their line. I'm talking about hiring a company to come, like what they do. They hire subs to come set the poles. Right. They come set the poles.
Well, Entergy would want to speak on the issue of whether or not they were set at the right location, the right height. They the right manufacturer? Did they, did we use appropriate construction measures? No. The answer is no, it's not workable. Plus, they don't have any responsibility to actually put the lines on those poles.
Got you.
Exactly.
They get to determine how they deliver service. The, the only option that we have is a voluntary workable solution with people of reasonable minds getting together and agreeing, this is the way this needs to be resolved.
I don't need to be there then. Because I'm trying to say it's reasonable takes me out. It's, I mean, and I want the people in Rankin County, those people that for four or five years have begged me, please fix our road. We've been needing it for 10 years, 15. And I've told them, I, we're gonna do it. I'm on everything, I'm gonna put into it. This is my project. And we have, the boards went along with it. Everybody has jumped in. And we've gotten the right of way. The courts have backed us. We're through there. We have gotten the bridges. I mean, we're looking at, at the end of this month, completing that. We're in phase two, fixing to do the, let the contract for phase two, clearing and grubbing. And like you said, Energy knew, we had them in a meeting December 19th. They knew this. And they wait until now, we're ready. You got to move. Because they knew they trapped us. We couldn't go any other place because we've torn the road up. We've put new bridges in and they've got us in, they've got my people in a trap. And I want them to know that we're fighting and we'll fight Energy as hard as we can fight.
So, let's say.
Because this stops the project.
Right. It does.
We don't have the money. We don't have it.
Let, let's say that, that at some point, which I don't think is possible, but let's say at some point, we figure out a way to fund this demand. Okay? This extortion. I'll just save for what it is. But we, we figure out a way to fund this. We're not without some tools. You've already alluded to them. And, and I'd like for the record to clearly indicate what the county. We're not without some tools. You've already alluded to them. And, and I'd like for the record to, to clearly indicate what the county's thinking is. This is, this is just thinking at the moment. We hope we don't have to implement this. But in the past, we've not made demands on, especially our electric utility providers. We've not made demands on them like we have other utility providers to pay us permit fees.
I don't, I mean, I don't permit fees. If you gotta go out there and cut a tree off their line, you gotta send them a bill. That tree costs, what, six hundred dollars to a fat corner on what size it is, every time.
Problem is, they, they get the Public Service Commission behind them every time. So, we need to get him behind us here.
Yeah, so, so I see a day in the very near future where our electric providers especially are, uh, are being required to pay permit fees. Uh, and the way I see it, uh, we, we would probably not be interested in discussing a reduction or elimination of permit fees for electric providers until every dime of this money that is being demanded here has been recovered. That's the day I see. I don't want us to get there. We don't, we shouldn't have to get there. Reasonable minds.
Correct. It should be different if we were back in January, February, March, and they said, guys, we need to have a meeting. Let us show you what we're looking at. But they never did that.
No, sir.
Had somebody run it by here or something? Who, who got the piece of paper?
They finally sent it in Thursday.
Mike?
It's there, brought it by you Thursday.
Just drop it by, huh? I mean, you'd think on something like this, we would have some type of a conference or some type of meeting and let's discuss it.
Steve, we did meet with them about three weeks ago, um, we met with them.
Yeah, and asked them to come on.
And that was, that was where we were trying to spur them to get this, um, the arrangements, the plan in place to physically do the relocation. From a timing perspective, we were in the middle of getting our clearing and grubbing contract ready for you guys to authorize advertisement. And so, we needed to have a meeting of the minds so that they understood, hey, the time is now. We gotta have, we gotta have you guys ready to relocate, okay? And so, during the context of that meeting, we indicated to the Entergy representatives and to the engineer who's designing this project, you do not have to relocate onto private property or acquire private easements. We will allow you to relocate to public right-of-way, just get off of, out of the conflict for the construction and get into more or deeper public right-of-way at no cost to you. And if we have to ask you to move later, we will document that we will pay you, even though you're in public right-of-way. We will pay you. And they either ignored it, didn't remember it, didn't like it, I don't know. It doesn't say. There's absolutely no indication that they are taking us up on it.
It's outrageous. It's, and, and, I don't know, I know we understand, if everybody understands, this million dollars plus for that road mine, seven hundred and eighty and three hundred, whatever.
Well, we knew that's all the pine, yeah.
Right. Well, if we get the money and pay them, who's that really affecting? The people that's paying the electric bills. The taxpayer is paying for their electricity and then they're turning around and sending money to the provider, three hundred thousand dollar corporate overhead.
Yep.
That's where they can maybe have a conference. I don't know.
I think, I think we need to get together then with...
But, I mean, the very people that's paying them to stay in business is coming in the back door and paying again to, to put their poles somewhere else.
All these people that we get, there's a, that, I mean, there's the people that live there, that's only to discount them, but everyone's gonna travel that road or pay in a light bill.
Yep.
To have been. And now they're gonna have to pay again to have a improvement.
Put a toll on it.
Improvement in their community. Yeah.
And I guarantee you, more than half of those poles probably need to be changed anyhow. They're probably fifty years old or more.
Probably.
And, so, this is just a win-win.
So, what, let's, with all this, I think we need to at least make an effort to, uh, if we need to have us sit down with whoever, y'all can think about who, but at least Public Service Commission. And we need to contact them. We need to move on in that direction. Uh, have energy represented, whatever we need, whatever we think is gonna work the best. But I'm ready. This is, I mean, this is, there's no, and the thing about it, if you don't get something, a grip on something now, it, it hinders any project you think about ever trying to do.
Yep.
Yep. I, I think, uh, one of the first questions that needs to be asked of the Public Service Commission is why is a, uh, utility monopoly allowed, 'cause they, they don't charge unless they're allowed by the Public Service Commission to do it. Why are they allowed to charge corporate overhead? Why? Why are they allowed to charge that to a political subdivision like a county? Or to the state? Why, why should the state be subsidizing a corporate monopoly, funding its own internal operations? Why?
All right, well, we need to move on, move fast.
That should be built into their rate structure. Why, why is that? Why did they, why did they even dare? And, you know, what, what comes across loudly and clear, clearly to me is, there's absolutely zero explanation for what that is. Corporate overhead. As if intuitively, we're supposed to understand that. Go, oh, yeah, of course, yeah. Oh. Uh, they don't bother to define that.
And that was three hundred and something thousand.
On the Andrew Chapel project, it's three hundred and nine thousand dollars on...
That's the corporate overhead.
Yes, hundred and six on Gunner.
Hundred and six, so.
A third... Look at it this way, almost half of the Andrew Chapel project is corporate overhead reimbursement. A third of the Gunner Road is corporate overhead. Corporate
Over.
overhead.
Chuck, you're awake, aren't you? Okay. I know we're going long.
So, uh, we belabor that point. So, I guess our next step is to communicate with Public Service, Service Commission and ask for a meeting. Uh, Steve, I, and guys, I think it's important, uh, I don't wanna step ahead of my engineer, but I'm curious. Uh, you, we've got, uh, we've got a bid opening on clearing and grubbing phase two that's staring us out there. How long the way is that?
I think it's like the twenty-fifth or something like that.
Right, so, I, I just mentioned that from this standpoint, um, we, we need to push for some sort of resolution uh, if we're gonna maintain any sort of real schedule on the clearing and grubbing. My concern is that we're gonna get at an impasse and not get any of this addressed and actually be looking at the possibility of a contractor who's being asked to hold a price, not really being in a position to let a contract. We may be starting this whole bid thing all over again because of this. I just keep, I wanna keep in mind that there's some time, real-time pressures here that could impact where we are in relation to our potential contracts. So, let's please keep that in mind as we go forward. And we'll try to help you guys understand where we are in the process. But it, it may really cramp our style here trying to get these contracts in place.
Certainly it is.
All right, Craig, thank you.
I want, I want you to like, I wanna fix it, so, something. Uh, that has to do with what we're talking about. So, in last week, we've, I've been engaged, December second, when we met with all the utilities, we told them they all had to do utility permits. Now, we're starting to get engaged from the electrical companies about doing a utility permit. And somewhere along the line, Comcast, we was giving them a variance, but they weren't happy with the variance. So, they sent a letter to Public Service Commission about our permit process. And I have not heard nothing. I've talked to Brett Bailey. He has not said anything to me about this. But I know they're trying to push the chain on the other side of the Public Service Commission too. And I wanted to let Craig know that.
On, on what we're, the way we're asking them, do permits?
Yes, sir. Cause I told them they had to do a permit, whether it's underground, overhead, it didn't matter. But I mean, I reckon where I'm getting that, Jared, is we asked December the second last year for you to start doing a permit process.
That's a different meaning than, than the right-of-way meaning, just to say y'all understand.
Well, yeah, well, that's when we met with the right-of-way folk, met with them and told them, you know, we needed our right-of-way documents, you know, for these projects. But we also asked them to do permits from now forward. Now, they're just, almost a year later, they're starting to engage about it. So, just wanted to let you know where we're at, all that experience.
Y'all have any questions about that? At this point, I feel pretty confident that we're gonna keep pushing this permit issue.
Okay, all right. Where, where do we leave the, this other exactly? And when, who, are you gonna, who's gonna be in contact?
Feel like we need to do it.
Do we need to do an open board or?
No.
I, I think, we, we asked for a meeting with Public Service Commission.
Right, okay. All right, so, we're getting, y'all gonna do that?
Uh, if you'll give me a few minutes here, I'll...
Well, you can just go legally.
I'll start process.
I would like for, I would like for us three.
And Craig.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Hi, Ms. Austin, come on.
Thank you. The first thing I have this morning is authority to pay the county share of the adjusted two thousand and nineteen persons on Constable Barry Bean in the amount of three thousand seven sixty-six fifty-three.
Why is it just his?
He's, uh, each year after they do their, their form at the end of the year, sometimes they get a refund, sometimes they have to pay in. His is the only one that I've gotten so far that he owes.
Okay, that's, that's my question. I got you, okay.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Steve, taken by Jared, any discussion? That's just the county portion, right?
That is just the county portion.
What, didn't, wasn't it discussed, what, they're paying their share?
They're paying their share, yes.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye.
The next item is authority to purchase two, uh, used Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles from the Missouri Highway Patrol. All the information is there. And to authority for, uh, several of the deputies to travel to Missouri and pick them up and pay travel-related expenses.
So, move.
Motion by Steve.
Say.
Taken by Brad, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
The next item is on the EOC, um, operations on the re- re- re-roofing to pay J H and H for their architectural services in the amount of one thousand four twenty-eight oh five and authority to issue that check.
So, move.
Motion by Steve, taken by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
The next item is approval for Rankin County to enter into an annual computer software support agreement with Delta Computer Systems for FY twenty-one. And you can see there the increases that we have had in each department.
Seventy-one thousand dollars a year. Does that have a motion?
Motion, I like motion.
Motion by Steve, taken by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye.
The next item is on our new courthouse facility, approval of pay application number thirty-seven to Chris Albritton Construction in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, five sixty-five thirty and authority to issue that check. And I'll stop.
I'll make a motion without the days.
Right, we're, we're, we're gonna stop after authority to issue check and strike the remain with that.
Motion by Steve.
With, by doing that, do we need, is any of this be taken into consideration of the things that Carl had said?
No. Yeah, you're, you're not acting on the substantial completion certificate. We're not gonna sign that until we have a meeting of the minds on the precise day that that should be.
Okay, all right, all right.
Second. Second by Brad, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye.
And we're going to pass on F.
All right. Additional business?
Yeah, she takes me home. I left it off while ago. Probably gonna wing this one. Uh, AT&T, am I right, Jen?
No, no. Uh, Strong River Construction.
Strong River Construction Fiber.
Uh, is to, water line for...
Water line. What, okay, Strong River.
For development.
Get a permit approved for a water line to be installed down Burnham Road out of Puckett for subdivision.
This is in the city limits of Puckett. And this is Mark's Mill, he's...
City limits, why do we have to do it? Because we're ma- we maintain the roads and they wanna get in our right-of-way. So, you guys need to give them a permit to access that. Now, a motion to add this item?
Make a motion, aye.
Second.
Motion by Brad, taken by Jared, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Most approve, Brad?
Make a motion, approve.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Taken by Jared, any discussion?
Uh, no, no. No, I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. That is, additional business? Do we have an executive session?
I think so. If, I mean, uh, one thing on employee related.
Yeah, I got something.
If it's an employee matter, you guys have a right to enter into the executive session discussing the...
I have some possible litigation.
Okay. I, I don't have any.
I have a motion discussing the going to executive session.
You will now.
Uh, make a motion.
Motion by Steve, taken by Jared, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
So, it's the personnel and potential litigation.
We, we don't, we both don't?
Not yet. I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel litigation.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Say.
Taken by Brad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. We are in executive session.
Our guy's tall.
All right.
Hey, that proved everything's good. I, I'd ask you that, I think, a month ago or so, but I'm telling you who he is. Good. Good.